And your kindness, your grace and mercy. So Father, again, we come together to carry on the business of the community and ask for wisdom and knowledge in abundance, for your holy ways to be made known, that families can thrive, children can grow, and old people can find peace and rest. Father, all these things, we look to you to provide, and I thank you for these men and women in this room who assume that responsibility for guidance. Your blessings on them, Lord, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Please, you remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Mr. January, would you please call the roll of the council?
Mr. President. Vice President Neal. Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
President.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
President.
Councilwoman Uselak.
Here.
Councilman Pettit.
Here.
Councilwoman Hardaway. President Bella.
Here.
Got five present, three absent.
We have a quorum. Thank you, sir. Moving on tonight to public comments. If you have a public comment, please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Brian Messarch, 201 East 60th Place. I'm going to use my three minutes today to remember and allow town council to know that my dear friend, Chris Holst, passed away on November 29. It was kind of sudden. Him and I met here at town meetings. We fought together for things. We strode to find things to do positive in our community. We picked up trash, cut grass. We even changed an alternator in a parking lot for someone who needed help. We were always looking for that. We didn't need a green light. We didn't need permission. We didn't need credit. We just wanted to do good things in our community, and we wanted to set an example so that neighbors could be neighbors. We were on the bike trail constantly, picking up trash, talking to people. We were a huge supporter of the bike trail, encouraging people to get out there. And Chris, if I was the storm, he was the calm, and he taught me to be calm. He taught me that you can fight in a calm, kind way. It doesn't always have to be fire. And the lessons I learned from him are going to be sorely missed. Maryville has lost a very, 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 very good neighbor. Thank you, and also props to Maryville Pirates and also to the Andran Football Team, who are the state champions.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Hi, Helene Peros, 7860 Wright Street in Maryville. I'd just like to say that I'm not a fan of the comments in the beginning. I liked it before the other way. And then I was just wondering about the speed humps and if those are going to be taken out. On our street, they haven't been done yet. And then my third comment is about if there's an initiative for, I guess I'm seeing an increase in the town of Maryville on smells related to marijuana, and I didn't know if there was an initiative with our town. It seems like people, I know it's legal in Illinois, but I just see that there's more, I can sense cars in front of me that are smoking, and I can smell it more than I ever have. And that's all. Thank you.
Well, you live in the fourth ward, right? Right Street, you said? I talked to Steve about those speed bumps, and he's made some type of a contact with the contractor who put them in, but they're supposed to come and take them out, and they haven't taken them out yet.
And it looks like they're waiting. I mean, unfortunately for the snow plows.
Right.
It's bad for them, and they are being damaged.
Well, Steve, our street director, he's made contact, and he's waiting for them to remove them. Okay?
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no others, moving on tonight to the consent agenda. We have the accounts payable, registered voucher approval of November 9th, and the approval of the town council meeting minutes of November 25th.
So moved.
Second, Mr. President, for discussion.
Open for discussion. Motion by Mrs. Uselak, second by Mr. Pettit.
Mr. President, until we get further information, I'd like to remove warrant 69004.
That's on the claims list, Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mrs. Uselak, is your motion, is that okay with your motion?
Yes.
To remove that one warrant?
Yes.
Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and motion carries. Moving on tonight to special orders. We have a public hearing on legal notice regarding ordinance 25-35. It's an additional appropriation. Mr. Svetnov, was that published properly?
The rules of publication have been reviewed. They are in order, and at this time, the public hearing is necessary to proceed.
Very good. Before we do the public hearing, Mr. Griffin, could you tell us what this ordinance is about, please, and what we're doing with it?
If you don't mind, I'm going to ask Trista Hudson, Senator Dalton, to speak to you on that.
Not at all.
These were prepped by her office.
Very good. Trista?
Yes, let me just get that in front of my eyeball.
You don't have these all memorized?
Well, they were, but there's a few more tonight than normal. I'm sorry, Mr. President. Which number?
It's ordinance 25-35, it's additional appropriations.
Where's the copy?
Mr. President, my recollection of that is, I believe that we're asking, is this the one for the overtime?
Attorney's fees and contractual services.
Attorney's fees and contractual services. We have one for overtime for police, and then we have one for attorney fees and contractual services. I'm just not acquainted enough to know which is it which, but we do need these to be considered by the council on a public hearing on them. She's rapidly going through her laptop to make sure she can find the actual text of the ordinance, and I beg the council's pardon for not being more informed about it. I gave some of my copies away to the council at the prior meeting.
Yes, you did. Thank you, Michael. Mr. Svetnov, do you recall what that was about exactly? And you're right, we have a ton of them tonight. This was an ordinance to restore and appropriate undesignated unreserved cash on deposit to the Corporation General Fund to accounts in the town council and administration departments for costs that were unplanned by those departments.
I'm sorry. Thank you. It is an additional appropriation in the sense that Department 7 will receive additional budget, but it is actually a transfer, if you will, within the general fund because it is coming out of Department Number 2. So in total, the town council will not be spending any additional money. It's just the proper procedure for being able to transfer that budget amount from one department in the general fund to the other.
And the total amount is $73,000, all accounts?
Yes, yes. Two different contractual areas for contractual services and then attorney's fees.
Thank you. Didn't mean to catch you guys off guard, sorry. Is there any public comment on this particular transfer tonight? Is there any public comment? Let the record show, there's no public comment on this, and we'll bring it up later in the agenda. VZA and large gathering actions. Ms. Schein.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our first petitioner is Miss Carrie Bender. Could you approach the podium, please? The petitioner is seeking special exception approval to allow a photo booth event space in a C2 community commercial zoning district located at 100 West 79th Avenue on 2.3 acres. Project description: Basher's Events LLC proposes to operate an indoor event space encompassing approximately 1,781 square feet. Since the opening of Basher's Events LLC in 2022, the petitioner has successfully coordinated and hosted over 200 special events. The proposed facility will accommodate a variety of small-scale gatherings, including meetings, corporate events, weddings, or showers. There is a growing community demand for intimate venues capable of hosting up to 50 people. The proposed use will primarily focus on providing an event space with integrated photo booth experiences. Operations and facility details include: All events will be conducted entirely indoors. The facility includes two exits to ensure safe ingress and egress. Basher's Events LLC will not sell, serve, or distribute alcohol. There will be no kitchen for food preparation on site. All external food vendors will be required to provide valid food handling credentials. Security will be present for any event after 6:00 p.m. The hours of operation are: Office hours Monday through Friday, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Event hours Sunday through Thursday, 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and Friday and Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. And this is for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheila. I mean, I don't have much to say after that. I mean, she pretty much told you what it is, but I'm Carrie Bender. I am the owner of Basher's Events LLC, currently a photo booth company. We have all different types of photo booths, 360 booth photo booths, flower walls, uplining, marquee numbers, things of that nature, and we're expanding into this small event space that will probably hold probably events of 50 or less. This is not a big space, it's an intimate space. We are also looking for our space, I'm sorry, let me go back, apologize. We also want to curate our space, our events, to be also for our photo booths, so have photo booth events. So for the holidays, people will come into our space and be able to have curated photo shoots for the different holidays that come up. Not only that, we will also have monthly events in regards to like speed puzzling. I'm a puzzler, jigsaw puzzles. So different smaller events for the community, in addition to private events as well for people who are looking for an intimate, fully decorated space. Me, Carrie, I have been in operations management in healthcare for 20-plus years, and I always enjoyed having events and throwing events and also connecting with people, so this was definitely my passion. Do you have any questions? I'm here to answer anything you may have.
Counsel? Mr. Griffin?
Yes, I have a question. Do they have to pay to use the photo booth?
No, it'll come with the, well, if you book the space, you're going to book the booth, the booth will come with, it's a package. But if you're coming for like the curated event, like if it's for a holiday event, like a Christmas, then yeah, you're paying for your photo, yeah.
So what do they charge to rent the?
If someone wanted just to rent my photo booth, my pricing starts at $420 for two-hour rental with prints, with no prints, props, backdrop, and attendant. If they want prints, it's another $150. That's for just to be one of my photo booths. But if you're coming to the space at one of my holiday photo shoots, then it's probably like $20 to $25 or something like that, and you'll have the space for about 20 minutes to take different pictures, and you'll receive printouts.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. President, you're in my ward, Ward 6, Carrie. I'm over here.
I'm like 75, sorry.
Okay. She's just down here on 79th. It occupies, do you occupy the space now?
No, not yet.
You're going to rent this from the owner?
Yes.
Okay. Sheila, were there any remonstrators?
No remonstrators.
All right. Mr. President, I make a motion. We approve the special exception.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, with second motion, Mrs. Uselak, for approval. Sheila, can I verify the address? It's 100 West 79th Avenue?
So that is the address if you want to receive mail. Those are the two buildings. They actually have a Broadway address.
Yeah, they face each other, they're.
Right, those are.
This address is actually a house in the community.
Oh, well, that's where they get the mail. I don't know how that works.
It's coming up, then when you look at Google Maps, it does bring you to a, like a neighborhood address, but it doesn't take you to a house. It takes you to a neighborhood in Google.
So let me, Mr.
But that is the address. That's the address that the owner gave me and it's rent next door.
Yes. Let me, Mr. President, let me have a conversation with John Matheson, who manages the building over there, about the addresses.
Great. Thank you. Any other discussion, counsel?
Question. So when you do your curated events, you said it's about $20 to $25. Is this, is this private, or is this open to everybody?
It's open.
And each person pays that for the 20 minutes or so?
Yeah, it'll be like, so it'll be an event that you'll have to sign up for. So they'll prepay for it, and then they'll have a slot, and they'll come in to take their pictures. Yeah, so this depends on how many slots we have for that day, and it'll be like $20, $25. Depends on what the shoot is, what comes with it.
And these come to your phone as photos, or you get actual printed photos?
Yeah, you'll get digital, and you'll get an actual physical picture.
Okay. And then to rent up your space, what price range do you start at?
$650.
Okay. And that's for how many hours?
$650 without a curated space. Actually, I'm saying $650 because also someone can come in and use our space, like I said, we have a photographer that we work with, so he can come in and use our space for his own private shoots, and that will start at $75. So it just depends on what you're using it for. So I will say it starts at 75, but if you're using our space for a small event that you want no, that there's no decorations, it's like $650. And if you want decorations, then that's going to be probably another like $1,400, $1,500.
And do you allow outside decorators to come in and decorate?
If that's what they prefer, yeah. But that's not the goal. The goal is hopefully that they look good.
Very well. Anything else? Mr. January, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Hi.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Hi.
Councilwoman Uselak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilman, President Bella.
Hi.
Five in favor.
Five in favor. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck. Ms. Schein.
So our second petitioners, petitioners are seeking special exception approval to allow an adult daycare center at 4200 West Lincoln Highway located in a C3 highway commercial zoning district. Project description: Sunlight Adult Daycare Center will operate in approximately 4,000 square feet of space, which will include an outdoor area, activity rooms, dining, kitchen area, ADA compliant restrooms, lounge, and gym. The facility will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and will be closed on weekends and holidays. Staffing will consist of approximately nine to 12 employees daily. The center will serve a maximum of 30 clients per day, maintaining a one to six to eight staff-to-client ratio. Programed services include: Sunlight Adult Daycare Center will provide the following services: Socialization and recreational activities, gym and fitness opportunities, health monitoring and wellness support, community outings and engagements, nutritional meals, transportation service, compliance and accreditation. In accordance with the Indiana Adult Services Rule 405 IAC 21-6 through 8, the program will be structured non-residential and provide supervision, support, and personal care while state licensure is not a mandatory for all adult daycare centers in Indiana. Sunlight will seek accreditation through the Indiana Association of Adult Daycare Services to demonstrate quality and compliance with industry standards, community outreach, and client base. To build client relationships, Sunlight will collaborate with caregivers, hospitals, rehabilitation facilities, veterans group to provide referrals and support. Their mission statement is, the goal of Sunlight Adult Care Center is to provide safe, structured, high-quality daycare services for adults who require supervision, social interaction, health monitoring, and supportive care in a group setting. And this is for this petitioners only, at this location only, and for this use only. And Mr. President and members of the council, there were no remonstrators.
Thank you, Sheila. Hi.
Good evening. Good evening, members of the council and members of the community. My name is Lucy Lirama, and we are here today to request zoning approval for an adult daycare center at 4200 West Lincoln Way Highway in Maryville. I am a home health physical therapist for more than 20 years. I have been serving this community for 20-plus years, and for those more than two decades of seeing people, or seniors, mostly seniors, geriatrics at their house, I have seen how quickly seniors can decline when they spend long hours isolated, alone, watching TV whole day on their recliner. You know, they have no social interactions and on a daily or daytime supervision. Many of the seniors are deteriorating because of their, not because of their medical condition alone, but because they are home alone. So this gave us the inspiration, both of us, an inspiration to start up this adult daycare center. So this is my partner.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. And again, my name is Lou, and I'm also a physical therapist for 30 years. For three decades, I've been here in northwest Indiana, working in a nursing home, assisted living, and home health. So like she already said and she mentioned, so any other questions, we could just answer you.
How is the parking area?
It's huge.
Yeah.
It's huge. They have a huge parking area over there.
What are you next to on that?
There's like behind or it's a subdivision, there's a subdivision behind, a townhomes, a subdivision behind it, and then across is.
The car junk.
Junk, something, yeah.
Are you taking the entire building over?
No.
Or a section?
No, just a section of the, a portion of the building.
Okay.
Because currently, they have a home health office.
Right.
And a DME, a DME, a durable medical equipment store over there.
What was your square footage space again? I may have missed it.
About 4,000.
4,000 square feet, okay. Thank you.
Well, what do you have, people coming in from the nursing homes for this recreational duties, or?
Mostly from their home.
Oh, from their own private homes?
Yeah, private homes, yeah. Or assisted living, or whoever.
I think I should say that the people that will benefit our service are usually the one that wants to be independently, to continue to be independent. Those geriatrics that are just left alone, and nobody, they don't have anywhere to go. So this is like a therapy for them, aside from physical therapy. They can go to us during the day and have their meal, breakfast, and lunch, and have their activity. Second of all, it is the, we cater the adults with cognitive decline, like an early decline, early dementia, so that will need supervision that we could carry over for the day, so they can come home with their family and be rested. The third one is, we cater the family caregivers, which is very beneficial for them because they're the one that has to go back to work and then have, and have not much time because they have to take care of their mom and pop. So we are the one that will take that responsibility during the day, during the weekday, that they can ease up during the week and get through their personal life and be still happy of what they're doing. And of course, with the community, it reduces long-term care costs and prevents unnecessary hospitalization. Because once the patient or once the client go to the hospital, they come home, and they don't have anybody, they just stay at home, and then again, they get immobilized again because no one is caring. So we are the step to that period where they could again go back to community and then do active, structured program for them, so they could still stay longer on their, on their present home.
So are you covered by Medicare, or how do they pay their bill?
So our payer sources could be Medicaid, private pay, the VA, and now long-term insurances. And then now Medicare has this new, they have a certain amount that they, that they will give per year as long as the patient has diagnosis of dementia.
Early dementia.
Early dementia, dementia, you know, any stages of dementia, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there an hourly rate, or is that a minimum, a minimum amount of hours that they can come?
We do, we haven't come up with the pricing because it's insurance thing, but we do have a plan, like a whole-day program, or a whole-week program, or a month program. So that will depend. But the private.
So not a daily, not a daily rate?
No.
So if I wanted to drop off my 85, my 86-year-old daughter?
Oh, yeah, we could do, start with that daily, and usually the daily for private is 100 to 110.
For daily?
For day, yeah.
Okay.
All right, you have a motion, boys?
Okay, yes, I'll, is there a question out there, though, first?
Would normally, no.
Because I live near.
Could you step up to the microphone, ma'am, so we hit recording?
You want me?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Hi, Helene Peros, again, 7860 Wright Street. We're in the same subdivision, but I was just wondering if they were going to be doing busing, or if people were dropping off their adult person?
We don't have bus pass, no.
No, you wouldn't be taking buses to go pick them up?
No, but there would be like.
And then you're going to be in with Christian Home Health Services?
Yes, yes, that's Christian Home Health, yes.
It's like the mini band that they, that they use on activity first, since leaving, but that's the biggest band.
Because you're right near Foxmore, and then they're going to be building that Autumn Manor part of the street, too.
Hey, guys, thank you. So for the record, Craig, in case you didn't get that, there's no bus service, so people will be dropped off and picked up for your services. Okay, very good.
Do you plan to get transportation in the near future?
Yes, we will.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to approve the Sunlight Adult Daycare Center, which I find to be beneficial, especially for Alzheimer patients or dementia patients.
Yes, definitely.
And I think, I think you'll do a good job there. Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Uselak, with second motion, Mr. Pettit, for approval of this petition. Any other questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, Mr. January, could you call the roll, please?
Sure. Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Hi.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Hi.
Councilwoman Uselak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
President Bella.
Hi.
Five in favor.
Five in favor. Motion carries. Congratulations, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on tonight to standing committee reports. Mr. Griffin, anything for Budget and Finance in Councilor Neal's absence?
Thank you. I have nothing for the council at this time.
Street Department and Park Maintenance, Mrs. Uselak.
Yes, I had talked to Steve over the weekend, and they were out there snow plowing again, and his staff, and they did a real good job working diligently on the weekend, and we did talk about the street bumps that were out there. They would be removed as soon as the contractor gets moving with it, but Steve's been on top of that, and so far, everything looks good. I see by the weather report, we will have more snow coming in, I think, before the weekend, and the temperature Saturday is supposed to be zero or so, so bundle up. And that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. So the way I understand it, too, Marge, talking to Steve, is that the company started removing speed humps.
Yeah.
The weather hit, they got behind, and then we're in the midst of snow, and so that's what happened, so. We will get them removed as soon as possible.
Good. For the Street Department.
Counsel Sheehan.
And we, we're getting a lot of slack about the leaf, the leaf pickup, about the leaves not being picked up.
That's terminated for the year.
It's terminated for the year, but I did see that they posted that people can drop off their leaves.
They did, posted it today.
I had a resident call me because she's elderly, and she can't get her leaves picked up. Is there another alternative that we can tell them, or?
Not right now.
Brian, do you guys have your people available to help with that?
The leaves got knocked down late in the year, the snow covered them, and we couldn't pick them up. I had a call today from Marion Woods, which has 100-year-old oak trees, and they said there's piles all through the neighborhood, so.
Wow. Well, they're buried in the snow.
They are now, yeah. It's, it's an issue, but.
They're going to be buried.
Yep.
Oh, and then Steve also mentioned to me, bringing up the towing. He said there were cars on the street, I think he said they towed it in about six or seven.
Chief, is that right?
Yeah, we did tow cars. Steve was communicating with, or actually, Steve's people were communicating with our officers, and if there were vehicles that were in violation, we were towing them. The rest, code enforcement has been going around and writing tickets, too, as well, some of the ones that are just pushed in, because right now, there's no two inches of snow on the ground, so we're not going to tow them. Some of the ones that are just pushed in, because right now there, there's no two inches of snow on the ground, so we're not going to tow them, but we will write them tickets.
We'll do the best we can.
Which I had called in to you, chief, and somebody had reported there were like four or five cars on one block belonging to one owner. And I think you said, he said, you said, he said, he was a car collector?
Yeah, he's got some older cars, but uh those, that should be resolved. Tiffany's been in contact with them, so that should be resolved here. Uh, I think the expiration date is going to be tomorrow.
Okay, because one of the residents on that block called me again today and said they do not see any movement of cars.
Once, once the expiration is, she's going to start ticketing them daily. And if the snow comes, we're just going to impound them.
Okay, good, thank you.
Mrs. Uszak, we should probably, I want to get a chance, talk to Steve about any alternatives in doing a a January leaf pickup once the weather breaks.
Well, if there's no snow on the ground.
That's what I mean, yeah, when we get a break.
I mean, in January, you never know.
Well, whenever, yeah, that's true.
That's a good idea.
In April, you could have a blizzard, but anyway.
Okay, let's move on. Uh, Council Affairs, Councilman Pettit.
Uh, yes, Mr. President. We had a Council Affairs Committee meeting last Tuesday. And thanks to myself and my committee and Michael, we have four dozen ordinances to go through tonight.
Thank you for that, Mr. Pettit.
You're welcome. Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Fettinoff was there too. I'm sorry for attendance purposes.
Mr. Griffin, anything to report on personnel policy and employee benefits?
Mr. President, um, I'll accept that we should be conducting individual employee appraisals. As you know, the department heads are my employees along with my personal staff. We're going to try to get that started. December fifteenth was the deadline. I'm going to try to make that, but we'll see. But those are underway now and they'll be filed in the appropriate places when they're completed.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. President, uh, to Michael, uh, being a member of the committee, Michael, we also have Resolution twenty-five forty-six as part of the health insurance plan.
With your permission, Mr. President, Councilman Pettit, we do. This one, if you decide to adopt, will essentially adopt the proposal that you received from Myers-Garros. It will be roughly a five point nine percent increase over the prior year. Given the market, that's incredible. I mean, that's, it's commendable. Uh, so we think it's a good recommendation. There is still an issue before the council with regard to employee co-pays. That has to be done by ordinance. We'll have a conversation about that, I hope, at the work-study session.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Environmental Affairs, Mrs. Uszak.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Well, like I mentioned before, the temperature is supposed to be zero this weekend. And everybody should take comfort in their own home if they don't have to drive. And the pharmacies in the area are still giving out different shots, flu shot, uh COVID nineteen pneumonia. So if you care to partake of that, that would be beneficial for your health. And that's about it that I have on the environmental, except it's going to be really cold. Thank you, sir.
Sure, thank you. Let's jump down to Economic Development. Mr. Pettit.
Uh, yes, Mr. President. We had a redevelopment commission workshop uh before this meeting. Um, Angie Chilcot had um DEF consultants come in. They did an analysis of all the tax abatements. Uh, the item on the agenda from the Council Affairs Committee meeting that Michael wanted to memorialize is the creation of a redevelopment Department General Fund, which the fifteen percent uh payback that everyone gives us on abatements that Angie and Joanna have collected at the tune of almost six hundred and ten thousand will go in that general fund, correct, Michael?
That is the intention if you approve the ordinance.
Um, Mr. Pettit, do you think that we could make that report available, maybe coordinate with uh CHAZ? It puts it together some type of uh visually pleasing report to show?
Yeah.
Okay, that'd be great. Um, Utility Liaison?
No report.
No?
President Bella?
Thank you. Parks Recreation and the Dean and Barber Community Center.
Uh, Mr. President, I will defer to Jerry later on in the department meeting, or report.
Very good. Uh, Special Committees Abandoned and Blighted Properties, Counselor She.
Thank you, President Bella. Nothing to report at this time?
Special Town Projects, and now we had a special project recently.
Thank you, President Bella. Um, I want to um talk about the annual Christmas tree lighting that we just had this past weekend. Um, it was held at the Dean and Barber White Community Center from four to six. Um, it was a nice turnout, success. Um, the kids loved it. Um, I will let Jerry continue to speak on that as well because he was there.
Very good. How about the Semi-Quintcentennial Committee Report?
We are scheduled to meet next week and invites and emails will go out for that. We're getting time.
Thank you.
Yes, I will send out the email. They'll, they'll get an email invite and with the time and date for us to meet for that. We're getting closer and closer.
It's coming, isn't it?
It is coming.
Uh, Department.
Next out for that.
Department Reports, um. Clever, Treasurers Report, Clerk Treasurer, Mr. January.
Sure. Uh, I actually have no report today.
Okay. We do have money left in the, in your safe, right?
In your safe.
Okay, we're good.
How much? Tell us how much.
No report, I got scared.
No, I don't, I don't recall the exact figure off the top of my head.
Yeah.
I was um actually at the uh, we did the wait for Chris today, and I took up a lot of my time. I normally take two or three, but it was a great wait, great person. And um, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Did the food and beverage, uh, send in any more money? We never have spent any of it.
We've earmarked some for spending.
Okay, I remember that.
Uh, Parks Department, Jerry.
Yes, thank you. Um, so as Councilwoman She had mentioned, we had the tree lighting last weekend. It was a, it was a great event. Um, I got a lot of feedback from community members um on things we could improve on, um, but it was a success, in my opinion. Um, tonight, we had our first movie night in the event center, New Projectors, which was really a hit. Um, there's about thirty-five to forty community members that showed up, both adults and kids. Um, wanted to say thank you to Brian for coming out to volunteer for that event. Um, he put in the, the hard work with the rest of the crew, so I want to say thank you for that. And thanks, Councilwoman She, for attending and bringing your son. Um, basketball signups, uh, after December twenty-second. Um, there's an increase in ten dollars for the fee for that league because it's past the deadline. It'd be late registration. But we are taking registration for the Winter Basketball League, Youth Basketball League. Uh, we have family fun days that are planned for January. Um, different activities that families can come out as a family and uh different crafts, different uh family building activities. So that's uh January tenth, January seventeenth, and January twenty-fourth. It's a new program that we're trying to roll out. Um. Uh, again, I, I said this last time, but the tunnel lights in the Erie Lacawanna Trail, Bike Trail, uh, tunnel lights are installed. We have a ticket in for Ham and Nipsco to come restore some equipment out there to get power to the tunnel, but the uh equipment is ready to go in there. I checked on it a couple of times. It's very discreet. I don't think the people who may have vandalized stuff in the past even know that there's lights installed in there. So hopefully that, that works to our benefit. Um. And then I wanted to give a shout out to Mike Neal and his assistant at the center with his plowing initiatives. Uh, I know last week he had to come out twice in one day. He spent eleven hours trying to keep the uh community center parking lot and the sidewalks all cleared, so no one slips, it's hurt. Uh, because people were showing up still even in the snowstorm, so he spent his whole day um making sure that community members were safe. That's all.
Thank you. Uh, Police Department, Chief Nusis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have much today. Just wanted to address that the holidays are coming and this is the time of year that we do see an increase in thefts, robberies, um, mostly directed towards retail stores. So we are focusing on that. Uh, we have been speaking with some of the actual stores. Some have chosen to contract police officers to come out and work off-duty security, so that provides us some safety and a added level of security and a peace of mind to these retail stores. So that's been the big thing for us that we've been focusing on right now. And uh, I just wanted to give some recognition to Ms. Shine. Last uh council meeting, I had some people approach me about some issues that they had in their neighborhood. I contacted um Ms. Shine and she took care of it. So thank you for always taking care of all our needs that we can't handle. That was, that's all I have.
And thank you, Chief Nusis, for always taking care of everything that we do in need, especially with the welfare checks, wellness checks of the people that are out in the cold.
Thank you.
Uh, Planning and Building Department, anything else tonight, Sheila?
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, Town Managers Report, Mr. Griffin.
Mr. President, I hope that you had at your places there the written report that I've been preparing since I've arrived. Unless you have questions about it, I will be pleased to be seated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Moving on tonight to General Orders and Mr. Pettit's Ordances. First ordinance is Ordinance twenty-five dash twenty-seven. It's an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordances for the town of Maryville to further revise the Maryville Code language for the redevelopment department pursuant to Indiana Code.
Motion to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
This is Ordinance twenty-five dash twenty-seven on first reading. Motion by Mr. Pettit, but the second by Mrs. Uszak. Any discussion on the ordinance? Anything else to add, Mr. Griffin?
No, sir, Mr. President. Counselor Pettit actually explained it very well earlier.
Thank you. Hearing your other comments, Mr. January, roll call, please.
Sure. Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uszak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
President Bella?
Aye.
Five in favor.
Five in favor, the motion carries. Moving on tonight to twenty-five dash twenty-eight. It is an amendment to clarify the duties pertaining to the Clerk Treasurer from Indiana Code and clarifying the duties related to memorializing the proceedings of legislative bodies, committees, added to the extinct, existing section of the Maryville Municipal Code, excuse me.
Motion to approve, Mr. President.
The motion by Mr. Pettit, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Uszak for approval. No comment. Open for discussion, Mr. January.
Sure. So, uh, this legislation, uh, my office is basically governed uh by the uh state statute. Uh, most of the stuff that we're talking about in this um uh ordinance, I believe, is unnecessary because it's already covered by the uh state statute uh in regards to uh the additional duties, uh in regards to going to additional committees. I think that's something that needs to be discussed before we actually uh get into it, uh, before passing the ordinance. I think it needs to be clarified.
Okay, this is first reading only, and Mr. Griffin, do you have any comment on that?
No, Mr. President. We had a brief conversation beforehand, and we should have the conversation he's asking for. Thank you. I, the only thing I want to add is, a lot of that is out of the statute. It is considered a best practice among clerks that this be added to the code. It is kind of a thing that does change. Sometimes they want it to be Spartan and not mention a thing, but in most places, they actually had more. We had a Spartan reference to the Clerk Treasurer's office in our code. This actually more fully carries what the statute provides for. But I know the provision that he's talking about that clarifies that committee meetings of the council are the same as legislative body meetings. We need to have that conversation.
Can you do that before second reading?
We have to. If we don't make it to second reading, we'll have to start over.
Well, I guess the question.
That's exactly right.
I, I think it should be deferred.
Mr. President, I think.
Well, we can pass it on first reading, Mr. President, I guess, to you and Michael. Um, I just made a note to myself, uh, is this a town council workshop? If we pass this, as opposed to me calling another Council Affairs Committee because it's only two other members of the council, the rest of the council ought to chime in that weren't at the Council Affairs meeting, I guess. I don't know. Joe, do you have any advice?
I want to know, what is it that you disagree with?
It's the, um, we, we haven't clarified what the committees are, because I attend every single meeting.
I know you.
Uh, that the town has. It's just the additional uh meetings that would require a whole, maybe an inordinate amount of time. And then I have to coordinate it with all of the staff people, and most of the meetings are in the evening. So I think it would place an, an additional burden on people that are already doing a lot of work. Like say, for instance, our bookkeeper, she wouldn't go to the meetings. But initially, when she started, she was doing three bank recs uh for the entire town in twenty-twenty-one. We're doing twelve bank recs uh right now. Uh, we're constantly adding responsibilities to people in the Clerk Treasurer's office, but yet they're not getting any additional pay. So I, I want to just make sure that there's some clarification about what it is that's in addition to it, because the law clearly states what I'm supposed to do. And I've never missed a meeting in two years.
Well, maybe before the second reading, we could sit down, or you could sit down with the manager, whatever the president prefers, and this could be worked out.
This would be a subject of the next town council workshop.
Okay.
That's correct.
That'll happen.
So can we defer this until the next one, so we can get clarity?
I beg your pardon?
I say can we defer this until the next council workshop so we can get clarity?
Well, again, I think we, you know, first reading, the, uh, an ordinance could be amended between first and second reading.
It's correct.
I mean, it's up to you. I mean, we have a motion in a second on the floor. We have to vote on that motion, or someone has to make another motion to table. It's pretty simple.
I think we should keep pushing it through, approve this, which will give us a deadline, and next Wednesday it'll be on the agenda for us to talk about it further. If it's just the one issue, Eric, it'll work out, right?
Yeah, I didn't think it was necessary. We just work it out. I don't even know why we have an ordinance.
Just for clarity, I guess, just for clarity.
I am too.
But there is clarity when he was sworn in, correct?
It, it's in the statute.
I'm asking.
Okay.
We had clarity when he was sworn in. It sounds like we're going back to what we were dealing with a couple of months ago when he needed to report to you, uh, well, to the town manager for whatever reason, and it's like it's redundant. Why are we doing this again? So I would like to make a motion to table this until further notice. I mean, so we can really de, you know, divulge what's happening here. And I wasn't at the last meet, uh, Council Affairs meeting, so I would like to know everything, and it's a lot to read right now, and we're here today.
Mr. Fettinoff, motion to table, sign?
Motion to table, if the council wants to consider.
Do you have a second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Leona? Any discussion on the motion to table? Hearing none, Mr. January, roll call.
Vice, Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uszak?
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Uh, President Bella?
Aye.
Five in favor.
We will table.
Thank you.
Moving on tonight to Ordinance twenty-five dash thirty-six. It is an ordinance to amend Chapter thirteen point five of the Maryville Municipal Code establishing and revising fees and charges for the Parks and Recations Department. Motion by Counselor She, is there a second?
Second.
Second Amendment, Mrs. Uszak, for this first reading, Ordinance twenty-five dash thirty-six. Open for discussion.
Uh, Mr. President, I've talked to, talked to Michael, and I know Jerry, you and Michael have been talking. Um, again, this is one that is highlighted in yellow, uh, section in Fee Reduction in Waiver, Section M. We've had this discussion as a committee, uh, but some things have come up um for tonight. As chairman, I will support this, but similar to what Mr. January, we just talked about with the previous ordinance, from first to second reading, changes can be made. So Michael and Jerry and I are going to sit down and talk about some of these uh instances where fees need to be waived for people that are asking for them. We need to dive into, there's a couple in particular that are pending on Jerry's desk, so again, I'll support this tonight for first reading. But there, you'll see it probably a different ordinance for the committee members.
These are the ones that we talked about in our meetings.
Last time, right, and we got to go through those again, Shauna and Steve, because there's been other requests, so.
All right.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, Mr. January, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uszak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
President Bella?
Aye.
Five in favor.
Five in favor, the motion carries. Moving on tonight to Ordinance twenty-five dash thirty-seven. It's an ordinance to further amend the existing wages and salaries ordinance to implement the provisions of the collective bargaining agreement of the FLP Lodge Number One sixty-eight regarding the general increase to sworn officers' salaries and clarify a position in town administration and town courts.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, motion by Mr. Pettit. Chair will recognize Counselor She for the second on Ordinance twenty-five dash thirty-seven on first reading. I'm sorry? Open for discussion, go ahead.
Okay, all right. In regards to this ordinance, um, I would like to add in the um, prior to the uh second reading uh that I've got one employee where I'd like to reduce their pay by three thousand and increase another person's pay by three thousand. another person's pay by $3,000 in the ordinance, in the salary ordinance.
Okay?
Is this a, is this going to be permanent, Mr. January, as far as the line, because again, they're titles, not necessarily, obviously, individuals, so you're saying that line item for whatever title.
Correct.
Is going to be $3,000 for the rest of this year, '26, '27?
Permanent reduction.
Permanent reduction, okay.
Did you notify the two employees of that?
Correct.
Okay.
So then we just need to have Michael, we just needed amendment, you know, get the number to Michael as to which line item it is, I guess, right, Mr. President?
Yes. See, this is why, though, I support salary ranges. To allow department heads to.
Flexibility.
Some flexibility in what they're paying. You hire someone at one rate, in a year, they're doing a great job, you can increase them, still within the salary ordinance, and these strict numbers always handcuff us.
Right. I wholeheartedly agree with you.
But historically, Rick, your first term on the council, and when I was town manager, those were always the caps. The number in the salary ordinance was always the cap.
Up to, right.
Up to, you could pay that line.
We never do that.
But we never, we never did that in the past, though. You guys never went up to the caps on the first go-round.
I believe part of it may be due to the fact that it's been inflationary, people's wages are not keeping up with the cost of living, and as a result, we've probably been hiring people at a much higher end of the scale.
At the top.
Yeah, at the top.
And town revenues haven't kept up, so, I believe that's probably what the problem is, but just.
And it's time for change.
Department heads, the flexibility to really shift the payroll around, and maybe even possibly eliminate some positions.
You could have had this flexibility already, to make that adjustment on your own, without changing the salary ordinance again.
Exactly.
So.
So moving forward, we won't have.
We could do some work on the second reading.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on the first reading? Mr. January, roll call, please.
Sure. Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uslak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettitt.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Five in favor.
Five in favor, the motion carries. Moving on tonight to ordinance 25-38. It's an ordinance to restore and appropriate under, undesignated, unreserved cash on deposit to the General Fund, Motor Vehicle Highway Restricted Fund, and the CCD Fund.
I was looking for it, so moved.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Shawna? Do you have a motion, is there a second for discussion? Thank you.
I don't see it.
Trista, do you have any knowledge on this one here, what we're doing with this large?
Yes. The council might recall that early in the year, the police overtime line wasn't really fully budgeted. There was conversation about, are we paying it from RDC out of general, and we're going to address it then, as we saw how the expenses went throughout the year. We're obviously at that point now to determine that decision. So, the first point you have before you is to add the appropriate budget number into how the overtime has worked this year. Very unusual, we don't normally operate that way, obviously, unusual circumstance, but have spoken with the administrative manager at the police department to help determine this number. The second item you have before you then is for the Motor Vehicle Highway Restricted Fund. Again, some payroll adjustment there as the different projects this year occurred, you see almost $100,000, based on the additional warmer weather we did have earlier this year that did allow them to do additional projects beyond what they first had anticipated. The last item then for the CCD Fund is the third additional appropriation that's being requested, relates to the Body Cam Contract, which was established the end of last year after the budget had already been established by number. We had already planned that this expense would come from the CCD Fund, we just didn't know exactly at that moment what the value would be, and those payments for that contract are due at the end of December, so timing here works well for that.
Very good, thank you, Trista.
Mr. President, to Trista, this ordinance is going to be an additional appropriation, this is going to be a public hearing at the next council?
That's right.
We have the legal, and we have enough time and everything?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else from the council? Hearing nothing else, Mr. January, roll call, please, on the ordinance 25-38.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards, did you say something?
Aye.
Did you have a question or comment?
No, no.
Okay. All right. Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uslak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettitt.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Five in favor.
Five in favor, the motion carries. Moving on to ordinance 25-39 this evening. It's an ordinance reducing appropriations in the annual budget for various funds pursuant to a couple of different Indiana codes. Trista, what are you doing here?
In order to allow the cash balance to flow well from this year's budget to next year's budget, we're asking that you reduce the 2025 budget this year in these two funds, local road and street, and the law enforcement, continuing education fund. Again, department heads have been consulted about this. It's simply the process, it happens once in a while there. We budget in the LRS fund, for example, a little bit more than what will actually be spent, but it gives the department heads some flexibility for their expenses to then occur. However, for the budget then to follow through that 18-month cycle to the end of next year, we need to make sure that the cash balance is restored and healthy for what they're not going to spend this year. Because of that 18-month approval process with the DLGF for the budget, we do ask that you consider spending the rules tonight and approving on second reading then right away this ordinance. It does not require a public hearing, but it will allow better timing with the DLGF budget field rep to then receive the signed copy tomorrow in conjunction with the last GO bond that's planned closing next week, for her to then process final approval on the budget. It would, it would assist her schedule better for that, for us to then receive our budget order. You could wait and vote at the next meeting in two weeks, it would just delay that process a little bit more.
Thank you, Trista.
Motion to approve, Mr. President.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Uslak. Motion by Mr. Pettitt for 25-39 on first reading for approval. Any other discussion from the council? Hearing none, Mr. January, roll call, please.
Sure. Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uslak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettitt.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Five in favor.
Five in favor.
Mr. President, I make a motion to suspend the rules and hear 25-39 on second reading.
Is there a second to suspend?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Uslak. Motion carried on first reading, is any other discussion?
Do we have to, do we have to take a roll call, Joe, on the suspension?
We do. We're going to do that right now.
Okay.
Mr. January?
Sure. Mr. President, Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uslak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettitt.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Five in favor.
Five in favor to suspend the rules, we will hear this appropriation ordinance on second reading tonight. It's ordinance 25-39. You'll still need a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Pettitt with a second by Mrs. Uslak on second and final reading to approve ordinance 25-39. Any questions or comments on the motion?
So this will no, this will no longer delay the process which Trista was speaking of.
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing no other questions or comments, Mr. January, call the roll, please.
Sure. Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uslak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettitt.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Five in favor.
Five in favor, the motion carries. Trista and Mr. Griffin, do you know what to do there?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Moving on to ordinance 25-40. It's an amendment to add authorized payment in lieu of taxes or pilot fee on the stormwater utility services. Mr. Griffin, could you brief us on this one?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have the president of the Stormwater Management Board, Mr. Chris, here tonight as well.
Hi, Doug.
I did have a meeting with their executive director, him, and also key people that advise them, along with, we had two representatives, actually, from Senator Dalton there that day. We're recommending that you favor this ordinance, we don't want it passed under extraordinary circumstances. We hope that you'll consider it for first reading this evening, and then we can talk about it during your workshop. If you pass this, this will establish that we can have a payment in lieu of taxes, commonly called a pilot. This is not an uncommon practice that is done by municipalities that actually are the department that formed, the executive department that serves as a utility. As we've talked about this before, we don't think that the statute that enables the Stormwater Management Board allows for a lot of discretion, like a return on investment, which some utilities are allowed, but we are very strongly in belief that this payment in lieu of taxes would be defensible. Basically, it says that the utility is non-taxable but an enterprise, and it gets the benefit of not being taxed by this unit for property taxes. And then the pilot becomes a calculatable amount that then gets returned to the unit as a payment in lieu of a tax, because they're benefiting from being non-taxable. There's a formula that's been identified, although we're going to have to modify it because it's got a fixed date. We get data that is empirical every year. I will say, the board seemed, the board president seemed receptive to this, and sort of the staff. There is a process, however, that the Lake County Auditor has, so if you pass this, we won't be able to get the effects of this until 2027, because we have to have the data for the current coming year, not before the April date before they go out. In fact, I thought if we could get in by February, it'd be enough, to have a September deadline of the year preceding. So, this would have had to have been passed before September of 2025 and made ready. We don't believe that that should be a barrier to consideration, and I hope you'll favor it. I'll explain to you what likely would happen, and we hope you'll favor it. Now, you can't do it alone, it'd still require the board of directors of the Stormwater Management Board to actually have a hearing and include this in their rate, but they're willing to do that if you're actually willing to get this established, because you need kind of both to make this happen.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Motion to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettitt, seconded by Mrs. Uslak for approval of ordinance 25-40 on first reading. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, Mr. January, roll call, please.
Sure, Mr. President. Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uslak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettitt.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Five in favor.
Five in favor, motion carries. Moving on tonight to ordinance 25-41. It is an amendment to clarify and, in some cases, modify the current municipal vehicle excise tax as determined desirable.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Mr. Pettitt.
Second.
Second by Councilor Sheehan for approval. Mr. Griffin, anything to add to this?
No, Mr. President. It's a very commonly understood excise tax that the laws enabled us to pass. I think I can discuss it more fully during your workshop, if that's agreeable.
That'd be great, thank you.
I thank you, Mr. President.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, Mr. January, roll call, please.
Sure. Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uslak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettitt.
Yes.
President Bella.
Yes.
Five in favor.
Five in favor, the motion carries also. Moving on tonight to second reading ordinances, we have ordinance 25-24. It is an ordinance to amend the Maryville Municipal Code to correcting typos, typos, excuse me, I can't even say the word, typos. Typos in the modification of planning and building department fees and charges.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Pettitt for a motion, Mrs. Uslak for the second. Ms. Schein, anything to add to this one?
No, sir, Mr. President, I would like to say that there were a couple of conflicts with the way permit tracks calculates, and so, we just couldn't change them, we had to go back and advertise and redo it again, but I think that we hadn't had a fee increase since 2008, and I think that this will take care of it, and I thank the council.
Wow.
For your consideration.
Well overdue.
Thank you, Sheila. Any other discussion from the council? Does it require a public hearing, does it, Mr. Pettitt? Very good, Mr. January, roll call, please.
Sure. Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uslak. Oh, Lord, I skipped Uslak. Go ahead, Uslak.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilman Pettitt.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Five in favor.
Five in favor, that motion carries, second reading. It's all right, keep us on our toes. Moving on tonight to second reading, ordinance 25-35. It's an ordinance to restore and appropriate, undesignated, unreserved cash on deposit to the Corporation General Fund to accounts in the town council and administration departments for costs that are unplanned by those departments.
So moved.
I can't.
A motion by Mrs. Uslak, seconded by Councilor Sheehan, for approval of ordinance 25-35 on second reading. Any discussion from the council? Any discussion from the council? Hearing none. Mr. January, roll call, please.
Sure, Mr. President. Counselwoman Haines Edwards.
Aye.
Counselwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Counselman, Counselwoman Uselak.
Yes.
Counselman Pettit.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Been a long day.
The next section will be easier.
Thank you, Mr. Pettit and Mr. Griffin for all of that.
You're welcome.
Things we have to do, guys, housekeeping. Moving on tonight to resolutions, simple, wonderful resolutions. The first one, 25-46, is a resolution authorizing and approving a group medical and health insurance plan for municipal employees, their covered spouses and dependents pursuant to Indiana Code.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Uselak made a motion and Mr. Pettit seconded it for approval of resolution 25-46.
Mr. President, just a shout out to Michael and Kathy and particularly Matt Galeros, who has always got our best interest, giving us one of the top health insurance plans for our employees with, I believe, Michael, you said, a 5.9% increase?
That's correct.
That's not too bad in this day and age.
Yeah, we were hearing prices of 10%, up to 15%, 16% increases from other companies, so that was a nice sight to see. Any other discussion? Resolution, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
I'd like to have a roll call vote, Mr. January.
Oh, my, what?
It's getting late.
I'm denying that request. This motion carries. Moving on tonight to Town of Maryville, Resolution Number 24-47, it's a resolution authorizing temporary inter-fund loan or transfer pursuant to Indiana Code of the Indiana Code to support cash flow. This is a common end-of-year type resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second Amendment, Mrs. Uselak, for approval of resolution 24-47.
I don't know where you just read that from.
Anything to add, Mr. Griffin and Ms. Hudson?
This is just standard end-of-year cleanup. Of course, there's always expenses that change a little bit during the year, and clerk's office prefers your budget lines to not be negative on the remaining balance, so.
So does the town manager, just to be clear.
Thank you, Trista. Any other discussion on this resolution? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Moving on tonight to Resolution 25-48, it's a resolution authorizing a transfer to the non, excuse me, Park Non-Reverting Operating Fund.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, Counselor Sheehan with a second for approval.
Mr. President, I would like to point out to Counselor Uselak, who had asked a question earlier, Marjorie, this transfer is $250,000 from the food and beverage, so this is our, our first spending, if you will, of the food and beverage money into the Park Non-Reverting Fund.
Okay.
But Mr. January still has a lot of cash.
That we're going to be spending.
We're going to be spending.
And this is an approved expenditure, is that right, Mr. Griffin?
It will be if you pass this tonight. It's within the confines of the law, if that's what you're asking. The statute would support this, but we do need your action.
We're about to do that. Any other questions or comments on this motion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on tonight to Resolution 25-49, it's a resolution approving and authorizing an agreement between the Town of Maryville through its town council, acting as the works board, and standard empires for professional credit rating services associated with the municipal corporation general obligation bond, especially involving renovations to the police department, offices, and other things, which I believe include a new roof to Town Hall-
Yes.
...and a variety of other high-cost expenditures that we just won't have laying around in the general fund.
So moved.
Mrs. Uselak made a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Sheehan for a second on Resolution 25-49. Any other questions or comments from the council? Mr. Svetnov, anything? All in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That motion carries. Moving on to Resolution 25-50, it's a resolution approving and authorizing an agreement between the Town of Maryville through its town council, acting as a works board, and Core Construction LLC for professional construction and management services associated with the retrofit of the refurbishment of the police department offices in a municipal building. Any questions or comments, or is there a motion, I should ask?
So moved.
Counselor Sheehan, Leona?
Yes.
Ms. Leona?
Yes. I'm motion. She's second.
You said, "I move." I didn't know if you're moving or-
I said, "So moved."
So moved. We're getting giddy. Any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Moving on to Resolution 25-51, the resolution approving and authorizing an agreement between the Town of Maryville through its town council, acting as the works board, and Barnes &amp; Thornburg LLP, attorneys at law, for professional bound counsel and legal advisory services associated with a municipal corporation general obligation bond, associated with renovations to the police department, offices, and other things.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mrs. Uselak, I'm sorry, Mr. Pettit, the second by Mrs. Uselak. I was looking at Michael thinking we need to work on shorter paragraphs.
Mr. President, because we didn't have appropriations until last week, I could not bring these before you. You're going to see us doing more resolutions out of our office. I will explain that in your workshop as well, in consequence of conversations we had in formal dicta with the external auditors from the State Board of Accounts.
Yes.
And I'll explain why. We'll work on trying to make those shorter. On the other hand, all three of those things will be paid for by the bond proceeds, and because they exceeded $15,000, as does the last agreement, we need your permission as the purchasing agency of the town.
Thank you, Michael.
That's going to be quite a workshop. Should we bring sleeping bags and dinner?
Yeah.
Mr. President, I will try to be succinct, but work, sleeping bags may not be a bad idea.
Any other discussion from the council? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? This resolution is approved. Moving on tonight to the last resolution. 25-52, it is a resolution approving and authorizing an agreement between the town council, Town of Maryville through its town council, and the GHD Digital for GovStack, Stack, excuse me, a public sector modular and scalable digital platform to enhance the website engagement and improve public information on the digital venues of the municipality.
So moved.
In other words, for a new website, Mr. Griffin.
Second.
Mr. Pettit made a motion, second by Ms. Leona.
We can.
All right. Any discussion on this resolution, guys? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Pettit, I think you have some old business for us. I heard something about some football games that were played this last weekend.
Some football games that were played last weekend and Thanksgiving?
This last weekend, yeah.
Last, yeah. Well, there was the unusual score of seven to nothing for the Andorian Fighting 59ers. They went all the way into the middle of the fourth quarter, scoreless. So that's, and unfortunately, the Maryville Pirates struggled in the second half. They were, they played well, and I follow these guys on max prep, so they played well in the first half, but I think they got worn down a little bit, and they were state runner-up. I think it was 38 to 14? Does that sound right?
38 to 17.
38 to 17.
They still did well and deserved a round.
Yes.
Yay!
And Mr. President and anyone else that has a degree from IU, Saturday night was a very special night for those football fans.
Yes, very nice.
Yay! I beg the council's pardon, but as an IU alumnus, I am very happy.
Me too.
A judge even has, yeah, the IU alumni.
Licensed, everything.
Yes, very good, very good. Speaking of the judge, we're inviting you to participate in our workshop next Wednesday at 5:00, as well as Ms. Flowers.
See you there.
Other announcements tonight, the next town council meeting is actually December 23rd at 6:30, and the RGC meeting is December 23rd at 6:00 prior to the council meeting.
And there's a planning commission next Tuesday night.
Planning commission next Tuesday night, the 16th, I believe, right?
16.
At 6:30 here at Town Hall.
Oh.
No other business before us, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Please.
I'm just going to adjourn now.
So moved.
Second.
Very adjourned. Thank you, everyone.